Okay.
Perfect, great. Okay. Okay. So, good evening. I'm going to call the Highland Park Planning Board meeting of, let's see, August 12th to order. This meeting is called to order with annual notice of this meeting provided to the Star Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Highland Park Planet on January 29th. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Plan on August 10th and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall. And I will just remind everybody to please speak up and keep your cameras on. If you happen to have to step away, you need to notify us because that means that you're, in essence, leaving the meeting. Jen, can you do roll call?
Yeah, well, hold on. Yeah, I can hear you, but I'm not sure they can. Kim, can you just give me a second? Alan, Alan Kluger?
Yes.
Can you make, apparently Jen is sort of in, but is, but can you make her a participant?
Okay.
So click on maybe that bottom center.
Okay, right, well, if I look at.
Are you listed as being Emma? Jen?
Host me?
Yeah, it looks like if you make, if you click Alan on the Emma, presumably make her a participant, then I think it works, we think.
I can make her, I can make her a co-host. How's that?
Even better.
Do that.
Participant.
All right. How'd that work?
Jen, are you there?
I, well, I can hear you on my phone.
But.
I can hear you on the phone. All right, something's happening. It says connecting to audio. Seems like something good is happening on the screen. Connected to. Can you guys, hold on. Can you guys say, say something, Jen? Can you guys?
No, we can only hear you through Roger's computer.
That's only through, through my phone and through the computer, so unfortunately, no, we can't hear you. Okay. All right, well, then, in that case.
It does show that the Emma one is recording, interestingly enough, but yeah, so, but Jen, if you speak up, raise your hand if you can hear Jen through Roger's computer, if you've been hearing her. Can people hear Jen through?
I can hear her faint.
Every, everybody seems to be able to hear you.
All right, so Roger, you hold that closer to your micro, to your.
Yep.
You know, microphone and then, okay. All right, so Jen, roll call, please.
I think that was me. I'm here.
Okay, that was, that was Rebecca Hand. Go ahead, go ahead, Jen.
All right.
That's Kim.
Just so Roger, just repeat what she says. Okay.
Miss Hammond?
Yes, here.
Mr. Bresser?
Mr. Bresser? Here.
Miss Hammond Hazy?
Miss Hammond Hazy?
Here.
Mr. Hale?
Mr. Hale? Here, okay.
Miss Hand?
Oh, I'm still here.
She's still here. Okay.
Here.
Mr. Kluger's here. Mr. Len, Mr. Lenaris is here.
He is here.
He's listed as Scott, but be that a minute, he's here.
Mr. Owen?
No.
No. Mr. Owen?
No.
Mr. Paulman?
Mr. Jeff, you got on me?
Here, here.
He's here, got it?
Mr. Williams?
Here, here.
Here, he's got it. Here.
Mr. Constantine?
Here.
And Mr. Fox?
Here.
Okay, we did it.
Okay. So, um, thank you, Jen and Roger. Um, okay, so we have just some minutes from our May 13th, June 10th, and July 8th. Do we, I think we only have the minutes from May 13th, though, Jen, is that correct?
Only the minutes from May 13th, Jen?
Yep, that's it.
That's it, yes.
Okay. So, I assume everyone's had a chance to review those. Do we have any comments or questions about the minutes from May 13th?
I had two finicky notes, but there's so many pages, it's taking me a moment.
On page. Take your time.
Oh, are we doing, I'm sorry, I'm on June, the June 10th minutes, is that what we're reviewing? You said May 13th.
We were doing May 13th.
May 13th.
I take it back.
Okay. Seeing no questions or comments or revisions, I would accept the motion to approve the minutes of the May 13th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
And that was Alan Kluger who made the motion to approve the minutes?
And do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by, it looked like Kalidra.
Okay, Kalidra.
Are we just doing a voice?
That'll be fine, you can do a voice vote.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any nays? And then, any abstentions?
No abstentions, Jen.
I guess we have no one who cast abstain, okay. Um, so Jen, I didn't see the June 10th minutes, were those distributed?
Were the June 10th minutes distributed?
Looks like Rebecca has.
I don't think they have them.
It was, it appears as though only a section were distributed, not the entirety, so.
All right, so let's just table that till our next meeting. I mean, it is nice, we try to keep our minutes posted in a timely manner, but I didn't see them, so I, I think it would be best then just table that. Um, and then the next, uh, item is actually, we're going to move things around a little bit on our agenda, so the Resolution P 2021-06, a consistency review on cannabis, I understand is being also tabled to our next meeting. Roger, do you want to state anything about that, or just?
Yes, the, the reason is because I, I quite frankly, looked at the ordinance and when I looked at it, I misread it and it is not a correct resolution and I'm pulling it, and I will have that available, that should not have any bearing upon what the council is already, is about to do or has done, because the action that you took was on the 8th of July, that's the formal action, it is well before the date that is required to take action by municipalities, which is the 22nd of, of August, so you are, you are okay, and the, and the council is okay, the resolution will be adopted as a, as a ministerial act or an a, for informal act, if you will, at the next meeting.
Okay. Um.
Yes, Matt.
Can I just, can you tell us briefly what the, what the problem with it was, or?
Yes, I, I frankly ended up looking at the, the order, I'm sorry, the ordinance, and did not indicate correctly the nature of those things that are permitted, and I just think that.
Okay.
Frankly, Matt, it just would not make sense to try to do that right now, I think it's better, given what I believe is the, the status of the law, you guys at the council level are free to proceed because the action was taken by the board back on the, the 8th of July, and therefore you can move ahead if you haven't already in regard to the ordinance, and therefore you're within the timeframe as authorized by the statute.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Is, does that, okay. Uh.
And one, one thing we did, I think we did get the email from Jennifer with the minutes yesterday afternoon.
Oh, I see, all right, I apologize for missing that. If, if everyone has actually seen it, I'm happy to accept the motion on it, if people feel comfortable doing that, and I would just abstain.
Jen, are the minutes that Alan Kluger and I guess Rebecca have for the June meeting, are they complete, or are they, should they be just as a draft and carried until September?
Um, I, I think I'd be more comfortable if they were just carried till September, because I only did the section that pertained to that application, because that's when I lost audio.
Okay, it, it appears, if I can interrupt, it appears now that I'm going to, I'm not going to lose Jen, but I'm going to put her down. Jen, say something.
Hello?
Can everybody hear her?
Well, I could.
Yeah, that was clear.
Yeah, I got her now.
Okay, Jen, I'm going to hang up because we can now hear you, you're, you're now Emma, we can't see you, but we can hear you, so I'm going to hang up so that it doesn't create reverberations in any way, shape, or form, all right?
You got it.
Right. All right, now, now we're set to go. I've hung up on Jen, she is now Emma, presumably.
Yep, I see her. Yep, she has video and audio, okay. Okay, so, um, we're going to move another thing around because I need to recuse myself for the, um, the Cleveland Avenue, the 238 Cleveland Avenue Resolution, and I just wanted to bring a couple items before the board, um, that Alan Williams brought to my attention. Some of them are, are more minor, but there is something that we, was already brought before the board and we discussed it in our January meeting, which was basically a checklist change to the site plan review that would allow us to understand who the professionals were involved in the application when it was in redevelopment, because a lot of times a project goes to redevelopment, um, it, an applicant might feel like decisions were made, think certain things were, were kind of set in motion, and then they still have to come before planning board review, and we had a situation where then we still had questions, I believe it was on perhaps the, um, the girl's school on Cleveland Avenue, and we felt like those people weren't available to us, so we had, um, back in our January meeting, discussed this, and, um, we basically, I'll, it was moved by Hammond and seconded by Williams to make a request to the board, to the, I think, the board council, I think it means the borough council, to amend the checklist for preliminary and final site plan to include, um, any documents that were part of the redevelopment process. I think there was also a request, therefore, that we would have access, you know, to, to question any of their, um, professionals, so I guess, Roger, maybe you could just talk to us a little bit about how, how that gets brought to the council, or what else we may need to do, or if it's just a matter for you or for Matt, or?
I'll be happy to do that, but let me ask a couple of questions of, of Jen. Jen, do you recall that, and can you advise whether or not a memo or anything was sent from your office to the, to the borough clerk to indicate that recommendation, and if not, that's okay, I can then make sure that I do it by way of a letter, or an email letter, of course, to the borough clerk as well as to the borough attorney?
No, that was not done.
Okay, I will take care of that, uh, Ms. Hammond, if you would like, I don't think you need to reaffirm that, but if you would like, for purposes of the record, to say that.
So it's in the, it's in our, yeah, it was, you know, it was voted on, it's in the, it's in the minutes from that meeting.
If I could interrupt, actually think a letter did go out from Roger's office on January 26th, because I have a copy, so, um, I think it did go.
Well, you know what, it, it may very well, I appreciate that, Rebecca, thank you. The fact of the matter is that nothing seems to have occurred, now, that may mean two, it could mean two things, one, it somehow got lost in the shuffle of paperwork that goes back and forth, or secondly, they received it and chose not to take action in regard to the request. Now, that having been said, I would suggest that, Rebecca, what was the date of my letter?
Uh, I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question was the date of my letter to the council.
January 26th.
26th. Thank you.
And Jen sent it to all of us on that day.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to get a copy of that letter, if, with the board approval, I will resubmit that letter and ask what action, if any, was taken by the board, I'm sorry, by the, by the council.
So I.
And then report back to the planning board at your September meeting, and Matt, if you have any information you can give us, that would be great.
We've never considered that, I, it did, we didn't say no, we didn't say, we, we wouldn't do it, in fact, I think it just fell through the cracks, so I apologize about that, I, I, we've talked about it in, in generalities, but I don't think there's any issue with the, with the council providing those, that, that checklist and those documents, I just think it just didn't happen, so I apologize about that.
All right, well, what I'll do is so that it, it hopefully will not fall through the cracks, again, I will resubmit it to the council as well as to Mr. Schmier as the borough attorney, and then make sure that he is aware, because I'll call him, uh, either tomorrow or the, or next week, to make sure that he is aware that the, the board is interested in knowing what the response is, and that if it, if it has not been discussed, as Matt has indicated, they, the board would very much like it to be discussed, and that an amendment to the checklist should be introduced, so that, that.
And, and what we had voted on, Roger, was that to include any documents submitted as part of redevelopment process, but I think the implied references also, that therefore, you know, we, we would be able to ask questions of, let's say it was, um, I don't know, you know, an LS RP, or I don't know what the example would be, but that we would have access to that professional, then, um, you know, to ask to, to get answers, I mean, the issue, the reason that, that came about was we had questions posed at a meeting that could not be answered, and, and, you know, and then, and then you're either holding up the process, wait, you know, holding a meeting to the next, to carrying a meeting so that that professional can show up, or? So.
I will be happy to take a look at the letter, I'm sure it's in my file someplace, and I appreciate Rebecca pointing it out to me, and I'll be happy to look at that, and I will send it and supplement it if necessary.
May I suggest that you also include Mr. Baumann on that, since he actually is counsel to the, to the borough council when they act as the redevelopment entity?
Good idea, that's an excellent idea.
So he can see that, yeah.
Okay, um, so, a couple other smaller points, so, um, one is I just wanted to make a note of, of course, we've already made our recommendations to council about the redevelopment plan, they're in between having their, they've, they're, or they're, have not yet had their final reading on that plan, and the planning board was cited on, I don't know if it was the cover, the cover page, as having, um, that it was approved by the planning board and memorialized by the planning board, and we did ask for that type of language to be removed, since we basically found some issue with some of the tracks and made recommendations, but we felt that that didn't accurately kind of capture the, 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 um, the activity of the planning board, and so, and speaking to, um, I think Terry and, um, I'm not sure whoever else, but that, and Jim, I guess, was that it was, they, they were very comfortable pulling that, since that was not the case, so, in case anyone had also seen that, that's now, the, both the redline version and the final version are online for public consumption, so just in case you had seen that, that you know that, that those, those items are now redlined, um, on that, let's see, so it's two more things, so one is, and actually, Alan, I, yes, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, yeah, I just wanted to add that we did incorporate the planning board's recommendations from your resolution into the revised draft, and we, we captured some of it was some of the, some of what you suggested verbatim, or we adjusted the language, and we also included some things such as some of the issues that I know Jeff Perlman had raised that weren't in the resolution about parking as a permitted principle and accessory use, and there was a whole bunch of housekeeping that we did, based on the discussion at the planning board and specifically your resolution, I just wanted the board to know that.
On behalf of the board, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank, thank you to the board, raised some very good issues.
I'm happy to contribute. So, um, Alan, I will, I know you had a question about the sidewalks from Madison Avenue, do, do you want to elaborate on that, or is that understood, and that question, I guess, goes to Jim Constantine, and that's what, in relationship to the, the girl's school on Cleveland?
Alan Williams, I think.
I think it was Alan Williams, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Alan, can, do you have any comment?
You're just asking about the, the sidewalks, if the sidewalks on Madison have been, the size have been determined?
I can provide an update if that helps. I.
Okay.
Alan, Alan asked a question at least two meetings previously, so there has been a meeting, we prepared some exhibits, and Chris Cessenza from our office and Perry Hovere did go out and they met with all of the four property owners who would be affected by this on Madison, there are two single-family homeowners between Cleveland and Harrison, and the next block up on the north side of Madison, between Harrison and Grant, and it seemed that the consensus from the property owners was, their preference was that the sidewalk sit against the curb, or a sidewalk integrated with the curb for location, and there was, there was different impacts on yards and existing landscaping and existing trees, depending on where it might be located, so that is going back to the borough for final determination as to width, um, of that sidewalk, and then still to be determined are the, um, the bike lane, which might also serve for some safer walking on Harrison, which would extend all the way up to the, basically to the Edison boundary from Madison, but that's still, there's an engagement with the Harrison Avenue neighbors that needs to take place as well.
So the width of the sidewalk is TBD, and what, and that's going to be determined by the borough alone, you're saying?
Yes, yes, there were some different.
And what are, and when will that be determined, like what, why is it not determined now, like what factors would change that, that we're not deciding what that would be?
I, I don't know, I think that, um, the intent, I think Terry was going to talk to Bruce and also to touch base with, uh, the safe streets, um, or walking, excuse me, whatever, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the name.
So just get more community input, you're saying?
Get a little bit of input on the borough side, we have the input from the neighbors, there were some differing opinions, but we know generally the consensus, preference of where they wanted it, because we gave them different options, and I think the feeling from some neighbors was keep it furthest from my windows and front door.
Right.
That had a different impact on some of the existing trees.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Um, so this last piece is probably towards Scott, so Alan brought up, I, I thought something that was actually a good idea, which would be to see whether you or someone in your office, Scott, could sort of give the planning board a real short course on, um, kind, yeah, well, the, the likeness of, you know, like how a bill becomes a law, in other words, like how, you know, once something is going to be built, what that permitting process looks like, and just so that, you know, and it could be something short that we incorporate into one of our regularly scheduled meetings, it could be something that you or one of your associates do or do in combination, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, it, it doesn't necessarily impact exactly what we do, but I think it could inform and, and sort of give us a little insight as to, um, what that process is once it leaves this, or to really understand, like, even for example, like what requires a CO, whereas like in some towns, a, a, uh, any major construction on a single-family home triggers a CO, whereas in like Highland Park, it doesn't, or what, you know, what sort of the stages might be, and if that's something you thought your office could perhaps tackle in a, without too much impact, but, you know, I think that would be a, a benefit to the board, so that's something I'll throw out there, you don't have to answer on the spot unless you have a, have a quick answer for us, but maybe that's something we'll follow up with.
I'm not going to answer on this, I'll get back to you on that.
Um, that sounds good. Um, so Alan, was that, was that sort of what you were, what you were looking for in terms of feedback from the building department?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we will await your answer, Scott, at a, I guess, either before our next meeting, or try to schedule something.
Okay.
So, at this time.
Actually, Kim, before you recuse, I was going to ask, ask, I don't know if you were coming back later, um, I was going to ask Matt, can you give us a quick overview or just summary of the scooter ordinance, the electric scooter, or what's, what's going on with that, and I think that's something that you guys just passed, and how that all works?
So, um, so two things passed at, at council, one was a, an ordinance about what the regulations are for electric scooters within, uh, within the borough, they didn't, we didn't have any regulations for electric scooters, so we, um, pretty much followed the state regulations in terms of age, in terms of where they can ride, in terms of helmet laws, we, we followed the, um, the state rules as, as, as best we could in terms of, um, public safety as regards to, to, to where they can go and, and how they can be ridden. The second aspect of it is that, um, after we passed that, um, the, the scooter ordinance for public safety, um, we have, uh, entered into a contract with Dio Rides, which is a scooter company that services Rutgers, um, they're, they're one of the companies that provides a, a hub where you can pick up a scooter, and then, you know, be able to, to, you know, the, a centralized place to pick it up, and so, um, we're working on the details of that, of, of where they might be able to place a scooter hub within, um, within Highland Park, so that it'll, um, help people in, in, we think it's going to help a lot of people do, uh, you know, live in Highland Park and scooter over to, to Rutgers in New Brunswick, so, um, so those are the two different components.
Thanks.
And that's something that has been decided, that what you said happened has been finally voted on, or you're saying that's in this, in, in the?
Yeah, both, both, we, we passed, um, uh, we passed the, the public safety one was passed at our last meeting, um, and I, and I believe the contract was also passed at the, the last meeting as well.
Okay.
That's, that's great, do you have a sense of when, um, Highland Park residents will be able to, you know, rent a scooter and, and bring it into the borough, give a sense of timetable on that?
Um, I, I, we're hoping by the end of the year, um, but that might be a little bit aggressive, so that, you know, we're, I don't have a specific timetable, but we're, we're ready to move as fast as we can, we think it's a great opportunity for people in Highland Park.
Thanks.
Cool, Kalidra?
Is there, has a location for where the stations are going to be designated?
No. Um, that's part of a discussion that we'll have with the, with the provider, um, and part of the, the process for doing that is that we will come up with a, a place where we think that it would work, we think that it might work, but then we'll have the data from actual usage to figure out where we might alter it to move it to a better place, or move it to different places, so it's, it's an iterative process, so we'll come up with their expertise and where we think might be a good idea, um, and if that works well, great, if it doesn't, if the data tells us that it should be in a better place, or, you know, more usable place, we can move it down the road.
Okay, so, um, so that your meeting doesn't go too long at this time, I guess if they're, you know, obviously you can always discuss things without me, I'll catch up later, um, but at this time, I will recuse myself and turn the meeting over to Alan Kluger for the Resolution P 2021-07, the suburban real estate 238 Cleveland Avenue. Goodbye, everybody.
See you, Kim.
Kim.
Okay, Roger, I may actually turn a lot of this over to you, just to also be clear to everyone which version we're looking at and what changes, um, already we know coming in, and any other proposed changes from members of the board.
Okay, let me just go through that, I appreciate that, Alan, and, as you know, you and I have talked about this a little bit, and as a result of that, there have been some modifications, but I wanted to, to point out that I received a, an email from Alan today, and, and I, he and I have discussed it, and I would point out a couple of things, I would refer the board members to condition number 13, condition number 13 deals with various things in terms of sidewalk replacement, curbing, and things of that nature, and Alan appropriately raised the question about whether or not the milling that was going to be done, if you recall, there was going to be some milling and overlay on the street and on Cleveland Avenue, and the question was whether or not it was going to be the entirety of the street or some portion of the street, I had a follow-up conversation with regard to that with Bruce, and Bruce, in fact, indicated that he had discussed at the meeting, as well as with the applicant, the fact that it was going to be done curb to curb, so that's now going to be added with regard to that aspect of it. I, he also raised some questions with regard to the neighbors on Harrison. To the neighbors on Harrison. I refer you to paragraph twelve on page nine. That's, I should say, condition number twelve, and, and I'll just simply briefly read that. It, it, I think it covers the issue. And it says, this approval is subject to the applicant providing for natural landscaping buffer, including evergreen trees. Both along, a, along the entire rear property line of all of the lots. Both under and, and proposed for the developments, for development sufficient to provide screening to the rear. Of the neighbors on properties of fronting Harrison Street and be along the easterly side of the. Rightmost lot, and that's the only way I could describe that. Currently under construction and said buffering landscaping shall be subject to the recommendations of the shade tree advisory committee as well. As the approval by the borough planner. So I think that that sort of covers those concerns. There is also an issue. Excuse me, with regard to making sure that, uh, that, that Bruce's comments. In his report were incorporated. I believe that the vast majority of his comments were there. As a matter of fact, both Bruce and. Jim's reports were incorporated into the record, uh, and that was found on page six. So there's, there's those taken into account. There was also a question as to whether or not we needed to make reference to the fact that you did grant waivers for purposes of. Completeness with regard to certain items, traffic study, environmental impact statement, uh, subdivision sketch plans. And slopes. Uh, my opinion is that I don't think it's necessary. I, you, you grant waivers all the time. I don't think it's necessary to point out what those waivers are. Once you deem an application complete. If you find that those waivers that you have granted during completeness review need to be supplemented. And if you want additional information, you always under the statute have the right to do that. So I don't think it's necessary for that purpose. And then there was a, an issue that was raised with regard to uh, the requirement for tree. Replacement, and I have also suggested that that is a good comment that was raised by Alan. And I think that therefore, uh, under condition number thirteen, it will probably go at the end on page ten. Indicating that this approval is also subject to the requirement of a tree, of the tree replacement ordinance. So I think that takes into account what I believe are the, uh, the concerns that have been raised. With Alan. There have been other, another concern that has been raised, and I don't know if all of you have received it, but. Because it has been a situation where it's been an interactive process, and you may recall that unfortunately my. Internet connection was unstable, uh, as, as they say on, on, on the screen. I had a hard time being able to, to follow exactly what was going on. As a matter of fact, when I mentioned that in another. Application or another municipality, when I said that my connection was unstable. One of the board members suggested that I need to go to a counselor. Um, I thought that was a really good response, uh, or a therapist, as he said. But in any event, getting back to the reality, as a result of, of some concerns that have been raised. I've had a conversation, excuse me, with Jim Constantine, and he was good enough to indicate that, that some of the concerns. Should be highlighted and, and taken into account. I believe that he sent me a copy, I know he sent me a copy of a revised ordinance, probably not more than an hour and a half ago. And I believe that it was sent to Jen. I don't know if she had the opportunity to send it to you as board members. Jim, I can either go into it, or if you wanted to go through those modifications, uh, I'll defer to you however you want to handle it. But I have the, the draft in front of me, or if you would like to go through that and, and point out what those modifications are, that would be fine with me.
Sure, I can hit them very quickly. Although it took a long time.
I suggest that maybe you refer specifically to the page and then we'll go to, you know, to the paragraph and that sort of thing.
Yes, um, so on page four. First paragraph, fifth line down, it's basically referring to the, uh, it, it was noted that one shade tree, one flowering tree for total. Two trees should be provided in the front yard of each lot. We're suggesting adding in or relocated to the rear yard. When the homes are pushed forward, the yard in the front gets smaller. There's already shade trees along the street. Or street trees along the street that are going to be planted shade tree and an ornamental. So we wanted that flexibility and that works. In concert with the recommendation as it's been rewritten, uh, rewritten. Regarding landscaping in the back that you just referred to as well. I forget which condition number that was.
I think it was twelve or thirteen.
Twelve, twelve, item twelve. So that gives us some more potential landscape material to relocate versus losing it. So that was a minor comment there. Further down in the second paragraph. In the one, two, three. Sixth line that begins in the fifth, it was agreed by the applicant that they would. Maintain the same building envelope and slide it forward. Excuse me, slide it up toward the front of the street to prevent the problem. We're suggesting that that. We, we changed that to read, it was agreed by the applicant that they would. Increase the rear yard setback by approximately five feet. Period. And that clarifies basically what the board approved, and it doesn't get us into. An area where we're referring to the building envelope, which actually isn't defined. It achieves the same thing, but with absolute clarity. And the reason we're suggesting approximate is that on the very first home that's going to be constructed. Requirement in the PO zone was for a twenty-five foot rear yard. That home actually. Because it was proceeding under the existing zoning, uh, is set back at the rear. Twenty-nine point three eight feet. So it is a, it moved approximately five feet. That's why we use that. Uh, all of the other homes will be greater than thirty feet in a revised. Kind of a, a pot plan that shows how everything would fit, uh, that was provided after the hearing. So. The, the end result is we've moved the rear yards while it's twenty feet in most of the residential zone in town. It's twenty-five here because it's a professional office zone. We've increased that to thirty. And then I'll refer to it in the next provision. You'll see how we're going to lock that down, which addresses questions the board has and that Mr. Koch raised. Specifically, so on page six in the one, two, after the first whereas, um, the paragraph after that. In the. Fourth line down. So I'm in the middle, I'm after the first whereas, the second paragraph after that, fourth line down. Right now it reads, they include the relocation of the building envelope and the placement of the house within the building envelope. We're suggesting that be reworded to read, they include the reduction of the front yard setback of the homes by approximately five feet. And increasing the rear yard setback to the homes by approximately five feet. Then the line after that.
And that, if I can just interrupt, that, that then becomes in concert with the language that, that Jim just talked about two pages before.
Correct. And the next sentence, uh, it reads, the intent was to move it, we, we just substitute each home further towards the street. And then the sentence after that, this is the fourth line up from the bottom on page six, a front yard variance is required. But it reads right now, a front yard variance is required, but the building envelope would remain the same as previously configured on the plan to avoid undue extension in the rear yard. And increasing the depth of the rear yard. We are suggesting it read, a front yard variance is required. And increasing the depth of the rear yard. Which shall be recorded for each lot on the as-built survey and as a deed restriction. Prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. So what we're basically saying is that we have a. There's a front yard variance being granted. We're increasing the depth of the rear yard, and we're asking for that to be recorded on each lot. And uh, Bruce or Scott, if you have a suggestion, I, we put in the as-built survey. I don't know if it's the as-built or the final survey. And then there's a deed restriction that would also be required. So now to address some of the issues that have been raised about the rear yard and the fact that. Somebody won't have the ability to buy one of these homes and extended it, extend it out. You will have in the resolution and in the documents that conform to this. Clarity that we've increased the rear yard setback by sliding the homes forward. We will have a deed restriction on each lot that will clarify that, and we will have a final or as-built survey. That will indicate that increased rear yard setback for approximately thirty feet. On, on most of the homes, it'll be a little more than thirty. That's again why we use the word approximately. So those are, you know, it's being controlled in a lot of places, and we have to hope that years down the road. Everyone's able to. Maintain that, you know, viewing it from administration side. On the borough, property owners being aware of it, being legally filed. So hopefully nobody will extend out a, a home five or ten feet. To the minimum setback, which we've increased with the granting of this.
And what that, and I think the language, if, if I can interrupt, I think the language tends to allow it to be tracked appropriately. Through a title search so that it's not lost in the shuffle in ten years when all the rest of you are gone and I'm not.
And then lastly, on page eight, again, to further reinforce this in the conditions. So this is in, begins on page seven, condition one, page eight, uh, am I, because of the track changes, my. My page numbers may have shifted, but that.
You're, you're right. It's on page eight.
The first condition here reads, the planning board incorporates the recommendations of its planner by way of variance and for the reasons expressed. Herein before grants the variances to allow for a reduction in the front yard. By allowing the front of the building, including the porch to be moved, we've added approximately five feet closer to the front of the property. And also we've added increasing the rear yard setback of the building by approximately five feet. Which shall be recorded for each lot on the as-built survey to be approved by the planning board engineer and borough planner. And it's a deed restriction approved by the board attorney prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. And then we deleted. Requiring.
Essentially the rest of that sentence, right?
The rest of that sentence, yeah.
And, and I, and again, I think that, that, um, that really kinds of, uh, to the extent that anything can be locked in permanently. It does give, go a long way toward that end, which was the intent and purpose of what the board was doing at the time. It was saying that it made some sense to, to try to move the building up further to the front. But it wasn't intending to allow for a greater building size in the rear. And this is a, I think, a, a, a good. Set of, set of words to end up including that so that it's clear for future enforcement purposes. So it sounds like there are a lot of changes, but they are really clarifications and, and really what boils down to. Establishing what your intent was as a result of the action that you took on the eighth of July. The only other comment that I would make is that, and this was a comment that, uh, a discussion, I should say, that both Alan Kluger and I had earlier today. And I refer you to page six. Uh, it said, the meeting is open to the public. There was a concern raised. With regard to the demolition of the building on site and how the dust caused considerable problems in the neighborhood. The applicant agreed to test the debris to assure. That there was no deleterious substances. There was a sense, and maybe Alan, if you wanted to chime in, there's a sense that maybe that language could be a little bit stronger. Because there was a big concern, um, you know, they had the right to do what they did, but it, it was done in a manner that didn't seem to, to. Be appropriate since it adversely affected a lot of the neighbors. And so, um, it, it, if you choose. Maybe it could be strengthened a little bit to indicate that. That, uh, members of the public also were concerned that there should be testing of, of the um. Material before it was taken away to assure that no deleterious substances were in that. So I'm happy to add that language if you'd like to do that, to get it a little stronger.
Yeah, I, I think we were looking for like even stronger than just cause considerable problems in the neighborhood. I think that there. People raise very significant issues, potential health issues, potential damages to their yards. You know, as, as, you know, and their, and their sort of everyday life was halted back there for. I, I don't know whether it was a day, two days, three days, whatever it was, you know, because they didn't do, you know, the proper procedures. To screen the Harrison Avenue neighbors from the work that was being done. Also, Roger, I think when you, we had talked and you had referred to, I think it was item twelve. You talked about the screening when the, when the property is developed, you know, the proper landscaping and screening. What I was looking for here was that the applicant agreed, while they were being very remorseful and regretful of, of what had happened, they had agreed. To that it won't happen again, that they would put up some kind, you know, appropriate screening, fencing, whatever it is. So that if they're doing additional construction work or clearing work, you know, that, that the neighbors on Harrison would be protected. But unfortunately, as a number of us saw over recently, that didn't happen, and they didn't do it. And their excavator was back there. They were taking, you know, um, dirt out in a number of. Dump trucks, and there was no screening put up, at least as of when I was there a week ago. It's on my walking route and. So I think we just need to be strong and clear here that, you know, the way they acted at the meeting is not how they acted, you know, they made nice in front of us at the meeting, but. But after that, they sort of went back to usual business, and, and I think we need to be strong here. Scott, I know you and I had some emails and, and I, I hope you are, you know, being, you know, taking them, taking this very seriously and watching them a bit more. You know, because I think they've shown us that, um, that maybe we, we can't fully trust them on certain things that they have promised to do. So.
I am watching them, but I'm not babysitting them, okay? One question I have is what kind of screening is the board looking for? I mean, I don't know what kind of protective screening that they would put up. You know, I'm a little confused on that.
Typically, wouldn't they water it down so you don't get dust?
Well, they did have the machine running as they were crushing it. I saw the water coming out of it. But I'm just trying to find out.
I guess I'd spoken with, I mean, Jim, we had talked about whether they just could put up some sort of. I don't know whether it's material fencing or something. We've seen in other construction sites that you can't see in because like, you know, what's on Walter Avenue and what was done on Cleveland beforehand. There was certain material fencing that, you know, not hard fencing, but some material put up that, um. That was able to, to protect the neighbors' properties.
Well, there, there's certainly, you know, construction fencing, which is done during the course of construction. I don't know that that would necessarily impact or reduce the amount of dust that would occur. I think that what Scott's talking about is, you know, if they're doing. If they're watering it down as they're supposed to, um, I'm not sure what else there can be done, but I, I, what I think is, and I, I don't want to. Negate anything that might be said by Matt or Kalidra, but, you know, the thought that I had is that, um, I'm happy to send a letter. To the applicant's attorney indicating that there is concern for ongoing activity. That seems during constructions, it seems to have adverse effect on abutting properties and that. They should take all means reasonable to be able to, uh. Minimize the adverse impact on abutting properties. And, um. I, I don't know that there's necessarily anything we can do in the condition, but I think that that letter might be, uh, a, a, an indication that the, that the board is watching, so to speak.
Right. And, and I think there just was some, my understanding, you know, I, I came away from the meeting and maybe I was wrong. I came away from the meeting that. They were not going to start any new, you know, construction or clearing until all the environmental studies were not only done. But approved by our, our professionals as well. So I guess in hindsight, it looks like the, you know, looking back, the. We received their phase two studies around on just this week, beginning of this week. So we hadn't seen them yet, yet we saw lots of construction activity going on. I mean, it appears that those letters may have been received by the applicant, you know, before they start the construction work, but I don't know that anyone. In Bruce's office or Jim's office or Scott, your office had seen them. Um, and, and maybe they did. I said, I just don't fully understand, you know, I had asked this at, you know, previous meetings too, how this interplay between. Between the environmental studies, the environmental issues raised. And, and, and this permit, you know, that was, you know, that was approved and whether it was okay for them. and 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 this permit, you know, that was, you know, that was approved and whether it was okay for them to 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 can, you know, to start new excavation work until all all our professionals have reviewed the environmental studies. Kalija, I think you were up earlier.
Is there any way that we can add language to this that sort of holds them to account for air quality and for minimizing dust? I mean, I don't think that we have to decide what they have to, what measures they have to use. And you know what mechanisms they use to do that? We don't need to necessarily assign that to them. But adding language to this that addresses air quality because a lot of the residents did raise that concern and that is a really big concern. It's a commercial building that they've demolished to build residential homes and it's producing dust that no one knows what it is. So I mean, I'm just asking if that's something that we can include to make the language in this stronger.
Well, let me respond if I can, you know, the the resolution or the action that you took. You know, dealt with certain things. I don't know that you can necessarily start adding things at this point in time. I'm perfectly happy to include in a letter the fact that that there is concern about the ongoing construction and that the the it appears as though it may have be having some adverse impacts on the quality of life of the on abutting properties and that action. All actions reasonable should be taken to try to minimize those impacts. You know, I do think that the the study this, the reports were submitted. It didn't, the reports did indicate that there were no asbestos or other dilatory substances, at least as I read them. I don't, again, I can't answer for what Scott saw or what Bruce saw, but you know, what I saw it seemed to indicate that now should they have actually maybe in light of what had happened prior to the meeting with all the dust and everything else, should they have maybe submitted those reports to Scott and said, look, I think we're ready to go. Is that okay? And maybe, you know, get some kind of a formal approval. Probably would have been good politic to do that, but I don't know that that's necessarily something that they are required to do, but in an effort to try to be good neighbors, they probably should have done and doesn't sound like they did.
Roger, for the future, can we re require that any if there's environmental issues that no construction can do can occur until everything is resolved?
Well, I I think you can. I mean, I think that the the issue becomes, you know, having being able to know that in advance. So that's always an issue. Like for example, if you have a gas station, it's going to be remediated or something of that nature, you know that upfront. Not all sites are quite so obvious and things may end up occurring that you don't know. So on on the appropriate cases, yeah, I think you can do that. That that you end up having testing and things of that nature. Now that clearly was not done in advance when they started digging the hole for the first foundation, but it was done apparently simultaneously with digging more holes or whatever else they were doing on the site. But I think it's it's got to be dealt with Alan on a on a case by case basis. You can't just simply say in every single situation, you have to show that there's no environmental
Yeah, I think you would, you know, have the you'd have Bruce weigh in on something that that just can't happen, you know, a professional saying you can't do this until this is a rare program. Till we've resolved this issue. Can we go back one second? See, not only did they excavate, but the the Precast Foundation is already in. And I think it'd be good to verify that they've met the requirements that Jim just mentioned.
When you say the requirements that Jim just mentioned, what specifically are you talking about?
You know, how far is from the from the street to the the front of the foundation and how far is, you know, what is it, the distance in the back?
It 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 does, and we did check that. However, there there was an issue with the first house and I think Roger had weighed in on this that they were applying for. We haven't approved this resolution, so we haven't approved our variances yet. So that's why the first house, actually, the the rear yard isn't fully thirty feet in the rear yard setback.
And at that time, if I can just interject, when that first house was being was being asked for by way of a permit. It was one house on one lot and they had every right to to be able to to pull that permit. So and at that time, there was no requirement for that thirty foot setback. So they they proceeded ahead and and now you have a situation where it's whatever Jim said, it's twenty nine point, you know, three three feet or something like that as opposed to thirty. So, you know, I I understand what you're saying, Alan. And and I I'm assuming that these foundations that you're talking about are being appropriately measured so that they are located in the proper spot.
I would hope so. But I don't know that.
Roger, in your years or Scott in your years or any other professionals, how often do you see an applicant come in for a number of houses and then just submit a sort of by right permit on one of the lots?
I I freely admit I haven't seen that, but that doesn't mean it's not something they can't do.
No, no, I didn't say they can't do it. It's just like, like I'm almost like sitting here, I was thinking before is that I don't know, do we, do they really have a an application for seven houses anymore or is it really just application for six houses? Because one of them is now is now part of a a totally separate permit or even application. And does that change any of the numbers or any of the other calculations or anything that we're doing? Or does the this one lot, you know, that they are building on or had a separate permit for sort of roll into this application?
I think it rolls into this application and as outlined in in what Jim has talked about, that's why he's provided the language of approximately five feet. So that the current lot, which is which is essentially thirty feet, although it's twenty nine point, whatever he said is essentially meeting the the variant standard. So I do think it rolls into this application. I don't think it's it's something that's separate and distinct, in my opinion. And therefore, and therefore the other elements of the, and and I think that's important to recognize because then the other elements of this approval apply not just to the six houses that are going to be built, but the house that is in the process of being built. So I think it's important that that it be recognized as part of this application.
Right.
One more question, Roger. You mentioned about the testing. That you wanted to beef it up a little bit. It would seem that would be a condition of approval also.
I think that that's already, they've already accomplished that. They've already submitted that material and
And I don't know what Bruce thinks, but I think it's not adequate.
Well, that's that goes beyond my pay scale. I'll defer to to Bruce or to some other LS RP to determine whether or not, you know, it's it's appropriate. What I saw said that there's no asbestos or other substances and if Bruce has got something else to add, so be it.
Jim, did the the lot that they've started building on, does that also have a front facing garage?
I I believe and Scott could jump in. I believe when they submitted the bill, the building permit, though, they they had no garage on it because they can't have a front facing garage until we approve this resolution. I thought they had prepared some sort of a alternate plan, but then they'll switch, they'll fold it into this application and they will have the room become a garage. It was originally considered a craft room, but laid out as a garage. And now it was a garage.
So the reason why it was by right is because it didn't have a garage. When, at least according to the original permit.
Correct. Didn't have a garage facing the street, which would require a waiver.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know, I'm semi laughing because I just, it's just an end around of what, you know, of our process here and I I don't think that in the future, we hope that doesn't come, this doesn't happen again, but it it really shouldn't, you know, so I don't know what you know, what else to say about it.
Oh, Kalidra has something to say.
I mean, I understand if we can't change the language entirely in the resolution that we have, but I would say that I am strongly in favor of any letters, like follow-up letters to this applicant stating the seriousness of managing dust and preserving good air quality in the neighborhood.
And and I'm going to add, I I absolutely agree with you. I've got that. And I also think that they should be respectful of the quality of life of the abutting property owners and do everything that they can in the future in light of what has happened in the past to minimize the impact of this construction on those on that quality of life. So I agree with you a hundred percent.
Roger, can you make sure to copy Joe Baumann and Jim and Terry on that as well?
Why Joe Baumann? He that's, this is not a redevelopment.
I just as as a Jim then or Terry, I just, I want to make sure that I want to make sure that the council's attorneys are aware of this particular issue as well. So.
Well, I in that case, I'd be happy to copy Ed Schmier.
Ed is fine. Ed is fine.
A question for Jim Constantine. On lot thirty-three, it still is probably eight feet above street level. Do we, is it your assumption they're going, all these homes will be at the same level?
I think basically the same level. That's my, I believe that's what their testimony was. There was some feathering they were doing of the grades. I recall them stated.
Okay, currently it's still way above the level of the other. The, you know, thirty-one, thirty-two.
The houses, I mean, they had a grading plan that was part of the package. Maybe Bruce could comment on that. I don't think I have, I don't have a copy in front of me. Or maybe I do.
Roger, another, while Jim was looking for that, another another item we may want to talk to the applicant about, or at least in your letters to their attorney. Is just the, again, from walking the neighborhood and seeing some of the construction activity. It appeared that some of the construction vehicles were operating very close or on top of or around the, I guess, the catwalk or the sidewalk, the public sidewalk that runs you know, all along from like Cleveland to Harrison to Lincoln. You know, like almost like going over the the right of way, the public right of way there. Either because they needed to get around some trees or some telephone wires or something. And that there was like tree cutting that appeared to occurred. I don't know if it's their property or on the property next to them. So I don't, again, I I don't know how much of that, like, like Scott, I agree with you. You can't be out there all the time. You can't be babysitting them. But I I just don't know if there's some way we can have that looked at or, you know, make sure that 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 type of activity is not occurring as it could be damaging, you know, said sidewalk area that's over there or just, you know, what other activities, construction activities are going on.
Is it, so that I understand, is it, is it a construction equipment that's going across the sidewalk that is necessary to get into the to the lots? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's a, it's a mid-block walkway. That's the catwalks Roger referred to that that run that are in these old, these old north side blocks that actually go block, block, block. It's like a little hidden secret route, if you know, if you live
Okay, you and I talked about that, but I didn't have any understanding that was a, there was a sidewalk there.
But that that catwalk, I believe, sits between two other lots owned by
Mr. Stern.
Mr. Stern, they're not owned by the applicant, so that's my understanding is that Mr. Stern has those lots that flank the catwalk.
I'll be happy to talk to you, Jim, a little bit further to get a little bit more detail so I understand. Because I thought that when you talked, you and I talked about this catwalk, I didn't realize there was a sidewalk there. I'll be happy to to look into that and and try to articulate it in relation to what Alan had said.
Right. It seemed like like the construction activity was happening, not on this applicant's lot, you know, property, but but the next property is over. So maybe they had permission, you know, to to use it.
Yeah.
Or to cut down trees to a tree or two or how many to in order to get their construction vehicles around. But it also seemed like they were going over the the catwalks as well.
Now, is, by the way, just one other quick thing, is this, is this quote unquote catwalk? Is this sort of an access to Harrison Street or is this a catwalk to someplace else?
It runs from Cleveland to Harrison, yeah.
Okay.
It runs across basically several streets.
But that may be true, but I'm I'm more concerned about this particular site. Does this particular property then have a catwalk that then goes over to Harrison? And that's what they're doing, they're using that catwalk to be able
One does not, Roger. It's it's too, it's a lot away.
It's a lot of ways. It's not, it's not, I didn't say, I didn't say it was on their property, but it seemed like their construction vehicles were traversing that area and maybe they had permission for Mr. Stern.
His name is Mr. Stern?
Joe Stern, the application for the Yeshiva project, Alan, I mean, Roger.
That's what, that's what, yeah, I don't know that for sure, but that's what someone just mentioned.
Yes.
I can add that to the letter.
But the walkway is a public right of way, and I think that's the safety issue that is being raised.
And the catwalk was damaged.
And if it's damaged, it would seem to me that they're, they have an obligation to repair it.
Agreed.
I don't think there's any issue about that.
Hey, Roger, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, now that you're Paul and Eris, I can.
Am I Paul? Oh, I can't, how did I become Paul?
I I don't know. I thought you you were the
I thought I was Scott.
Of Scott anyway, so.
It's rare that you see Scott and I in the same place. Hey, um, did I read also where they found two underground storage tanks? And and an old oil-fired boiler on one of those lots?
I'm I'm going to defer to somebody else. I don't know that answer.
I think I saw that in one of Jennifer's memos, but it didn't, it didn't refer to any soil sample directly underneath those tanks.
The tanks had been removed earlier.
And and then these samples, were they done in across the entire project?
Across the front of thirty-one and thirty-two.
And there were four, there were four soil samples that they took. I have a number of questions, not a number. I've got a handful of questions about some of the reports they submitted, but I don't know that I don't know if this is the venue to discuss that or if I'll just, you know, should, I'll check with my LS RP or one of ours and then present those questions to the professional who submitted the reports.
It certainly didn't, the report that I saw didn't identify, you know, even sort of a cursory description of where these samples were taken from.
It was a whole separate report from a soil consultant that has got four test sites on it and the results of that.
Well, it just seems to me that, you know, they could take four samples within a one square foot area and everything's clean.
Well, they didn't do that, but my question will is going to be, was the sampling done in accordance with the D P criteria?
Very good, very good. Thanks. Thanks, Bruce.
Right. But I guess, you know, as again, I'm beating, I'm beating the horse here. The fact that they've already, you know, dug the excavation for the one lot we gave them approval for and and dug out a lot of the soil and put the, you know, the foundation work already in. There's not much they could do within that one lot area in terms of testing anymore.
Been disturbed.
Right. Which is, goes back to my initial comment is, and Alan had asked the same question is is there anything that we can do to make sure in the future that, you know, when, you know, when we know we have phase one studies that raise environmental issues, whether we should be issuing any building permits or clearing permits or construction permits or any type of or, you know, permits in, you know, on that lot and and that's, I think that that's an issue that we need to address for for going forward. There may not be anything on our books right now. And everything we did may have been, you know, according to the rules as currently, but it's something for the future. I think we need to, we need to address.
Well, and Alan, and and yes, thank you. I think that was very well said, and especially in light of, you know, the lots directly across the street and the history of those lots and the history of the lower lot. It certainly makes sense to
It certainly makes sense to to go a little slower on this one.
I feel like the soil sample. The environmental report that they submitted, it addresses soil samples and soil contamination with regards to underground oil tanks. But a lot of the residents' concerns had to do with the demolition of the building and the dust produced from that. And I do recall from that testimony from this applicant, we were. Residents were, not we, but, and not saying not, not we. Residents' concern was the dust and what particulates could be in that dust. So I think to Alan's point and to the other Alan's point about testing material. Before the demolition of the building to make sure that there's no asbestos particles flying in the air when they tear these buildings down. I think. For the future, when we're in this situation, that would be something that we should consider before permits are issued.
Following up on that, it's my understanding that there were. Two episodes of dust. One of it was when they were crushing the concrete. The other was when they're moving dirt around. They're two, and they took a sample of the dirt, but they did not take examples of the crushed concrete. And now they've mixed them both together. At least it looks that way. From this, looking from the street.
Hey, Bruce?
Yes.
When they know that a building has, was constructed prior to nineteen seventy eight and they know they're going to demolish it. Isn't it required to take internal samples of building materials to ensure that there's no lead paint and asbestos in those buildings?
I I think I'd have to defer to Scott as the gentleman who would be issuing the demolition permit.
Scotty?
Yeah, they did, they did submit a report. I will look for it and get a copy of it over to you, Mr. Lanaris, if that's okay.
I was just wondering, I mean, Scott, you and I both know that it was built before seventy eight. There's asbestos in that building.
Yes, I know that, and they did.
No question about it.
And they did do a report and I will get it over to you as soon as I get back to the office tomorrow.
All right, well, no need, it's just, I just want to make sure they.
Well, no, I want you to have a copy of it just for your records.
Okay. So they, your recollection is that they did sample?
Yes.
All right, and they found asbestos?
There was no asbestos found.
In a building built of that vintage, no asbestos. So they only tested the carpet.
The applicant did testify at the last hearing. I have that in quotes here, my notes from no asbestos in the building.
We have a meeting call last meeting?
I was there for most of it.
All right.
There was testimony.
But I'll just get you a copy of the report.
All right, fair enough, fair enough.
So, okay, so I'm still gonna. Gonna stick to my comment that they, they, you know, within, within, within our rules. We need to watch them carefully, you know, and just, just based on what we've seen from them so far. Anyone else have any more comments on the resolution?
Oh, no.
Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I think that what you need to do is to solicit if the board is comfortable. With a motion to approve the resolution as modified as part of this discussion. I don't think you need to highlight every single thing that we've talked about because we've been talking about it for an hour and I'd have to spend another hour doing that. But I think we can certainly incorporate all of those items that we have discussed if the board is comfortable doing.
I will accept a motion as per Roger's. By your statement. I will make that motion to. As per the comments and additions, we have, we have discussed over the past hour. I'll accept a second.
I think that was Mr. Williams.
Yes, his yellow light went off first. Kind of like a game show.
It is. Like the old Hollywood squares.
Exactly.
Those of you who are old enough to remember that.
Exactly. Take a roll call, please.
Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Ms. Hethazy?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't at the previous meeting, so I'm gonna abstain on this.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Lanaris?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman?
I have to abstain. I wasn't at the, I didn't stay for the whole hearing last time, so I have to abstain.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, motion is. What else do we have on our agenda? I guess we'll open up, action, any other business? Anyone have anything else to raise? No? Any zoning building report?
Nothing new, just the house going up on Cliff Court, that's about it.
There's only one being built there, right? I walked by it the other day.
Yeah.
Right, okay. I don't know if Kim jumped back in for any revocation screening committee reports?
I I think she's gone. She led me to believe that she was going to be going after she left.
Okay. Openly meeting up to the public. Jennifer, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public session of the meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to give the planning board a quick update on something that's been discussed at the redevelopment entity. And Matt may want to comment as well. But as you recall, we we identified a couple of corridors for focus in the master plan that the planning board adopted. December of two thousand nineteen, we actually have some interest on the Upper Raritan corridor. The old Louisville site, next block over. And we, I had, we had presented. Some of the early discussions that have been going on with, in, there's interest from property owners. To basically come in and try to do something consistent with the master plan that's not permitted by current zoning, so. We had presented that back in May and then at the redevelopment and Tuesday night. We also. Shared and outlined the the Cleveland Avenue corridor, so outside of the. Private school that's been approved that was subject to a redevelopment plan. Now this seven lot subdivision. What happened, American properties developed across the street, it's sort of what remains on Cleveland. And so we basically presented that to the council and for consideration to also move. Remaining portion of Cleveland into a redevelopment plan. So that we can more or less custom fit zoning consistent with the goal of the master plan. Because right now we have the hodgepodge that was identified as a problem in the master plan. We have PO zoning, we have LI zoning. We have residences mixed in. We have a hodgepodge of uses, so. I guess it's a, stay tuned to see potential some. Focus on those two areas, which basically is further implementation. Of the planning board's master plan in addition to what's happening downtown.
How far along did you say the upper Raritan?
There were a number of folks that had circled on the Louisville site, but there is a group that would like to. Try to develop that and then the next block up to the north. Has also been assembled as well, so. We just pointed people back and said, you know, start by looking at the master plan. The vision, actually, we have a sketch, a before and after sketch, looking at those exact, that exact block. In the master plan and said, you know, go there as a touchstone to start. Thinking about what might be possible there.
Yeah, right now it's being used as a parking lot for some post office vehicles and some other. Obviously, the owner is probably renting out space to, you know, just for parking, you know, right now.
Correct. And then the last corridor. Just to hit on in the master plan was the Woodbridge Avenue corridor. And that's. Being explored for a neighborhood preservation program grant. Which would provide some funding for planning, but actually funding for improvements through a state program. Because it's a qualifying area in terms of some of the the income levels in the surrounding neighborhoods, so. And basically, the report to the planning board is of the corridors you identified. Outside of downtown, which also includes River Road, these other three corridors are moving forward into. A next phase of planning, at least portions of them.
And just on the neighborhood preservation plan, there, there are very few municipalities in Middlesex County that are. That have been qualified for this, so. You know, obviously, it's a state process and a lot can go on, but but we think we've got a good. Team together to, a good plan being set up and. So we're hopeful, so it could be a significant help up on on Woodbridge.
One last thing, Matt, I think also at your last council meeting. I think you approved something to do with an easement down at the end of South Adelaide. Did that have to do with the rezoning or the Polos? Property down there?
It was a split in the, in, in, into two lots is my understanding. There was a. Thank, Jim, maybe help me out a little bit here, I'm not.
Actually, I can help out, Matt.
Thanks, Bruce.
There was a storm sewer easement with a storm sewer pipe in it that would have precluded the construction of the subdivision as it was. Envisioned and approved. So on the plan, there was a new storm sewer easement created. And the storm sewer line would be routed through that new easement, but the existing easement had to be abandoned or, you know. Evacuated, however, whatever the legal term is for that, and the borough passed the appropriate ordinance to allow that to happen.
Thank you. See, I have nothing better to do, Matt, and just to watch your meetings, so.
You should find something better to do.
You need a life too, Alan.
That's okay, that's. So that's fine. Yeah, I know what we're gonna do. There'll be no redevelopment, you know, hearings and meetings to to watch and attend. So. I'll find something else to fill my day and my night. Okay, anybody else have anything else to add for this evening? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This, I was gonna do it again.
I second the motion.
All approved, all in favor?
Evening and a good rest of the week.
Thanks, Roger. Nice jokes.
Take care. Kalidur, your daughter's a delight.
Thank you.